And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the planning commission this evening. We are here because there's been a number of issues surfaced because of the Airbnb. And we are here with Tim Walkner. Pardon me if I butchered your name.
Close enough.
He is a legal counsel and is here to present the law. We're here to understand the law. It's not an emotional thing. We don't want it to get emotional. We want it to be law driven this evening. Pass that. Tim is here to answer all of our questions and more.
Well, I appreciate that, and I hope that I meet your very lofty expectations for this evening. My name is Tim Walkner. I serve as solicitor for the township. And I'm here to provide some background information relative to the short-term rental restrictions that are in the zoning ordinance today. To have a review of the purposes of zoning laws so that we understand why it is that we have zoning law and what ultimately our role is as a municipal entity. Some of the trends that are going on across the nation relative to short-term rental regulation. And then some of our abilities, or what our police powers are, what can and can we not do relative to any use, whether it's short-term rental or anything else. So with that, I wanted to give a couple quotes here from the United States Supreme Court. In 1926, there was a case called Village of Euclid, Ohio, the Enbor Realty Company. This was the case that really launched the whole concept of zoning law in this country. And it says, "The establishment of residential zoning districts..." This is not what this is explaining. "The establishment of residential zoning districts has long been recognized as a valid exercise of a municipality's police powers. They serve to insulate areas intended for residential living from increased noise and traffic, protect children living there and their ability to utilize quiet, open spaces for play, and to maintain, quote, 'the residential character of the neighborhood.'" Non-family uses, including fraternity houses and boarding houses, have been found to be antithetical to the residential character of a neighborhood. As, quote, "More people occupy given space, more cars continuously pass by, and more cars are parked, and the police travels with crowds." That comes from the Village of Belterra, United States Supreme Court's only case from The Supreme Court continued, "The state said a quiet place where yards are wide, people are few, and motor vehicles restricted are legitimate guidelines in land use projects." In a land use project addressed to family needs. This goal is a permissible one within other cases. "The police power is not confined to the elimination of filth, stench, and unhealthy places. It is able to lay out zones where family values, youth values, and the blessings of quiet seclusion and clean air make the area a sanctuary for people." Very lofty language in local municipal issues. Ultimately, it can be boiled down to this. The purpose for zoning is to ensure the quality and characters of a neighborhood are protected. What those qualities and characterizations of those characteristics of those neighborhoods are, however, are determined by the locally elected officials through guidance that is given by the planning commission. That's the process that we have in Pennsylvania. Zoning laws, the power to zone, is created through the municipality's planning code. And it establishes this body, the planning commission, as an institution given by, used to give recommendations to the board of supervisors, because the board of supervisors can't know everyone and know everything, despite what we like to project. But the reality is that we need to take input from multiple people, from multiple areas, in order for us to understand as a community what the qualities and characterizations of our neighborhoods and our various zoning districts should be. So what do we have today? Right in the middle of all the court cases in Pennsylvania coming down relative and regarding to short-term rentals, we adopted a zoning ordinance in some township. It's 204 pages. If you haven't read it, I fully encourage you to do so. You can smack me later. It is actually a good document, because it does what we were intending to do, right? It does express the protections of those qualities and characterizations of neighborhoods as they existed and as we understood them to be back in 2021. Now, at that same point, in 2019, we've got this Pennsylvania Supreme Court case called Slice of Life, which was the case that was really the seminal case, the first case, for the regulation of short-term rentals. And then we have another case following that called Leinberger, which further defines the ability and the influence of zoning regulations on short-term rentals. So all of this was coming down at the same period of time. What did we adopt at that period of time? Well, before we get into what the regulations are relative to short-term rentals specifically, there's a couple definitions that I want to make sure that we all understand. The first is a dwelling. What's a dwelling? What's a portion, excuse me, a building or a portion of a building used as non-transient living quarters and having individual living kitchen and back facilities in each dwelling? It says then, "This ordinance characterizes dwellings into the following types, including single-family detached dwellings." That's your single-family home that you're typically used to. Two-family dwellings, multi-family dwellings. What are the important pieces for us here? It's a building or a portion of a building used as a non-transient living quarters and having individual living kitchen and back facilities in each dwelling. What's a family? We define a family as an individual or two or more persons related by blood, marriage, or adoption, or foster childcare, including domestic workers or gratuitous guests thereof, or a group of not more than three unrelated persons living together without supervision in a dwelling unit, or not more than five persons living together in a group living arrangement with supervision. So what we're talking about there is we have a group home. There's constitutional rights to have a group home, whether it be here, homes for children or adults, the Harvard National Institute, you know, those are the ones that we're used to in these areas. They're allowed to move, and we can stop them or prevent them from zoning. So we have to give that allowance. So that's the group home allowance there that I just read. But let's go back to the more than three unrelated persons living together. The definition continues, and it says, "Provided that the group living arrangements meets all of the following criteria, one of which involves, does not involve, the housing of persons on a transient basis." Next, we go to the definition of a short-term rental. "The use of a single-family dwelling unit rented for the purpose of overnight lodging by non-related individuals for a period of time in which does not meet the definition of a then-practice use." It's a fairly reasonable definition of short-term rental, especially in 2021 when we were first putting this together, because we weren't really understanding how these things were being operated from a municipal regulatory environment. And so I asked, regardless of how you feel about the short-term rentals and where they can or should or should not be within the township, I asked, "Would we consider redefining that?" Because by its very definition, it cannot be a short-term rental. Because if a short-term rental is the use of a single-family dwelling unit, we define single families as something that is non-transient in nature, if we're going to have group living, and a dwelling unit as being something that is non-transitory in nature. So we define a single-family dwelling unit that's by their very nature a non-transient, but we're using that to define a building for its use as a transient use. So the question is, are we appropriately defining it under the zoning ordinance as it exists today, or is it something else? Is it something other than a single-family dwelling? It's just a question we're going to have to answer and take a look at. As it exists today in our permitted use tables, short-term rentals are permitted in every zoning district in the township. There's one other definition I want you to consider. There's a definition of a hotel. "A building or buildings, including rooms, rented out to persons as clearly transient and temporary living quarters. Any such use that customarily involves the housing of persons for periods of time longer than 30 days shall be considered a boarding house and meet the requirements of being a boarding house." I don't think we're doing many 30 days. I don't know. It also refers to see other things that it's not out. So by its very nature, the way that we have things defined today, it would appear that the use of a short-term rental is more akin to our definition of a hotel than it is for the definition that relates in with single-family dwelling. Does that all make sense to me? At least based on how things are written in the ordinance and based on how things are being used, that would just seem to make more sense to me from how things exist today. What is the law say? What do the cases say that would help us understand and interpret the zoning ordinance? Well, in the Slice of Life case, right? This is the 2019 case, the seminal case. What had happened was you had a corporation that owned a property in Hamilton Township. It's, I think, out of the Port of Doris or somewhere. I'm sure it's beautiful. And it was set up specifically for the purpose of rent. This isn't like my home, and I'm going to Florida for three months of the year. You know, those three months in the area that are poor sweating, you know, in the summer. You're staying there for those. The other time, I'm going to Florida. But nonetheless, the house was purely commercial in nature. It was purely used for commercial purposes, because it was being designed, built, and used for rental. And the court looked specifically into this issue of single-family homes, because that's what was in our R1 districts. And in their definition of single-family homes, they use the term "single housekeeping." And within that, they have self-definition relative to family. And they define family as something very similar to how we define family. Actually, pretty much word for word, relative to being related, two or more persons related by blood, marriage, or adoption, or foster childcare. And they indicate that the cases are such that, and their opinion was as such, that, quote, "The purely transient use of a house is not a permitted use in a residential zoning district limited to single-family homes by a, quote, 'single housekeeping unit.'" That's how they define it. A single housekeeping unit. We use the term dwelling unit. It's somewhat similar. Now, this was followed after a case that had previously said that, you know, that the misconception in Pennsylvania under zoning law had been that if you're going to have, if you don't zone for something that is permitted everywhere, and this case flipped all that on its head and said, "No, we have to specifically exclude something by putting it in somewhere else. And if we don't allow it anywhere, it's just not allowed anywhere." But that's not an issue for some township, because in our ordinance right now, we allow it everywhere. And I think the question that's before us is, does that remain to be consistent with how short-term rentals would be used and how we sort of want to regulate that? So Slice of Life case specifically goes into the definitions and tears them apart, which is why I read them to you, so that you understood that how we define single family and how we define family and how we define dwelling unit is the controlling means through which to determine whether a short-term rental is appropriate in those particular areas. We then go and we compare that with this other case called Leinberger, right? I don't know. This isn't as impressive in the legal world as the case called Slice is Life, because this isn't in an opinion that's reported. Okay, Slice of Life is a case that is determined to be precedential, where the Supreme Court says, "This is the law of the land in Pennsylvania." Leinberger is a non-reported opinion from the Supreme Court, or excuse me, from the Commonwealth Court. What does that mean? That means we apply the law as given to us by Slice of Life, but we haven't changed it in any way. Okay, so this is just an example of the application of the law. What do they tell us there? Well, in that case, we have a house with a cabin that's essentially an accessory-use building on a larger, like 50, 60 acre parcel that spans two different zoning districts, and neither works for residential. One is like a preservation district and the other, which was an agricultural district. And the property was owned by a family trust. And they rented it out about 30% of the time, and the rest of the time, they just had family friends that would use the cabin, this beautiful pristine piece of land wherever it may be in the particular, in Pennsylvania. And the court came down and using the definitions, found that their definition of family wasn't as tight as the definition that was used in Slice of Life or the definition that's used in some township. And they found, so thus, the definition of a dwelling unit for a single-family detached was a little broader. But also, because this was not purely commercial, because it's, you know, the family cabin that's owned by the family trust that they rent out occasionally, but is used by the family the rest of the time, that that's more akin to the version of the short-term rental that is permitted under their zoning ordinance than would be one that would be excluded as what we've seen under Slice of Life. So now that we know where the law is, right? The purpose of zoning is to protect the quality and character of the neighborhood. The quality and character of the neighborhoods that we want to protect are determined by board supervisors and the planning commission, who makes recommendations to the board of supervisors as to how the zoning ordinance should look. The zoning ordinance is a lot of pages of definitions for a very dark blue reason, and that is because the court interprets this using the definitions. In some township currently, we have short-term rentals that are permitted in every zoning district. My advice is, if we do nothing else, we need to take a look at those definitions, because how we define it doesn't seem to work. So we need to look at some other definitions down the road. But you have the option to make recommendations to the board of supervisors with whether you wanted to put those short-term rentals, if you wanted to limit them to certain zoning districts, if you wanted to leave them within all zoning districts, or if you wanted to prohibit them altogether. Now, if you did that, let's just say that you said that you're R1 version. What is that called, Tammy? The, what do we?
RLD.
RLD.
Residential low density, residential medium density.
So our residential districts, our RLDs, residential low density, residential medium density districts. You know, if we want to say we want to prohibit those, for example, and only allow these in every other zoning district, your commercials, your commercials, whatever it may be, could you do that? Absolutely. Would that shut down the Airbnbs and the short-term rentals that exist today? No. Because they'd be grandfathered in, because they were operating today in a permissive fashion, and if you change the rules, that would just affect any new ones that are going in. There's also the concept of grandfathering. And what that means is, if you have a use today that is allowed today, but the rules change tomorrow and it's no longer allowed, you can continue to use that because you're grandfathered in, but if you stop the use for a period of one year or more, you can't revert back to that non-performing use. You've given up your grandfathered status. So that's what would happen if you were to change it. What are some trends going on in the law right now? City areas starting to figure it out. I don't know. I don't think they know what they're doing. But they're battling this right now. Mill Creek Township has said no. They're not permitting short-term rentals. New York and San Francisco changed their rules to require hosts to be full-time residents at the property and cap the total annual days that are permitted to be able to be rented in 90 days. Paris, Berlin, Barcelona, just like Sutter. And Santa Monica, San Monica, California, not permitting new short-term rentals. San Monica in 2019 removed 80% of their short-term rentals by creating the toughest regulations in the country. The planning director in Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, says that their regulations on short-term rentals were not strict enough, and, quote, "It is ruining our neighborhoods, and people are moving to neighboring towns to find affordable housing." Atlanta has gone back to the book staff one year after implementing their rules to strengthen them. They are now requiring a local agent's primary residency requirements, defiance, and enforcement. So as you're looking at your regulations, what are some of the options that you have here, which you can do nothing? Leave it as it is. Perfectly fine. It's a policy decision. There's no right or wrong. It's what do you think is best ultimately for the township? I'm not here to tell you what to do. I'm here to educate you on the options and create the environment through which you can make an informed and educated decision. You have to ask yourself, I don't know what the answer, because it's involved in area law. When we look at that definition of hotel in the zoning ordinance, are these hotels? Well, if they are, what would that mean? What would make them, let's take the non-transient nature out of that. What's a hotel? A hotel is a, is a commercial structure constructed and used for the purpose of transient stays that's open to the public. Well, somewhere in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, we've established rules and regulations for building codes that are a lot stricter than building my house. My house is an ADA compliant. My house doesn't have sprinklers. My house is built out of wood frame. Fire ratings are different. There's a reason for that, because you have a commercial structure through which you have people in and out, and they have certain rules that are in place. And so I ask myself, when we take a look at this guy Slice of Life, who's from, I don't know where he was from. It says in the case, "Any protection," because it wasn't important. But he did live in the town, and he had a corporation that created an Airbnb, created a short-term, I won't pay about that. By the way, I do rent from them. We get cabins and stuff. We have cabins. You have a purely commercial structure that is created for the purpose of solely being a short-term rental. Should it really be given the allowances to be built as a single-family dwelling if that's not what the use is going to be? Is that right in our regulatory, and why are those rules in place? Well, safety and accommodation. If we're going to be open to the public, be open to the public. If you're going to be a single-family home, be a single-family home. Something to think about as you're considering what it is, and this is something that is something that is just struggling with every community that has these, that is taking a look at this and struggling with these very questions here today. So as you have short-term rentals, you want to ask yourself, are these rentals that you want to allow to have 365-day-a-year rental options in residential neighborhoods? Are we more interested in allowing, say, you know, my parents went out of Florida for those three months, and they want to rent their house out for those three months that they're on, so that somebody's in a house, in a house, make sure that the wire hasn't frozen, whatever it may be? Do we want to limit it to a certain number of days to accommodate those situations? Is there some other number in some mathematical formula that you can come up with that's appropriate? We can do that. We can limit where we put that. We can limit ownership to individuals versus corporations. Do you want this to be the person who bought the house next door to them because they want to control their neighbors and keep their neighborhood up nice, and so they rent that out? Or do you want it to be the big nameless faceless corporation coming in from another state that is owning that particular property? And really, it comes down to that question of the neighborhood, as who do you call and complain to? I know that Bob lives at that house, and Bob owns that house next door, and they threw a wild party last night. They didn't invite me, and I'm a little annoyed. I didn't get invited because I like a wild party. But if I don't know who owns that house because it's some nameless, wasteful corporation out of Toledo, Ohio, then how am I going to get ahold of them? So then it also leaves the question, if we're going to regulate these and require a permit for short-term rentals, do we require a local agent? Someone who is going to register with the municipality so that I, as a taxpayer, could pick up the phone and call Tammy and say, "Well, who is it that's responsible for the house that invited you to the party?" That's another option. Local agency, local agent regulations. You can put density limits on this. How many short-term rentals do you allow in a certain area? I represent Edinburgh Borough, which is some of the strictest rental regulations in, I'd say, the Commonwealth. Now, they're lightening it up because of the issues that Edinburgh University is having, and there is a demand there. But they have a system in place where you're only allowed to have so many rental licenses within any one particular block, every particular zoning district. There's ways to do that, and it has helped to limit the growth of the rentals, to allow for properties to be there for people to own and live in. So you just kind of have to back this squad some rental districts. So we talked about safety. We talked about whether there should be similar level, commercial level restrictions. I don't want the house next to me to have a sign on it saying, "For rent," on a regular basis. I didn't move into a neighborhood to have that say that. So if we're going to rent, irrespective of what we do as a township, I think we should consider, when we're looking at the definitions again, we should also take a look at limiting signage, not allowing that to occur, you know, "This house for rent, visit me on, you know, let me on Facebook," or whatever it may be. Does that comply with the character and characteristics of the neighborhood that you're trying to protect? Should you have a licensing fee? That would be associated with that permitting fee. That would be associated with that, if we're going to put in additional restrictions, somebody's going to have to check them to make sure that they're complying with. Is it a zoning permit? What is it? We should define off-street parking requirements. So one of the problems that we've had in Edinburgh recently is, you've got that beautiful thing in Edinburgh, I'll advertise it for a different community here, Jack, I'm just giving examples. But they've got this lakeside area, and there's all these little cottages, historic cottages that have been there for hundreds of years, and they're not exactly set up to, you know, for 20, 30 people living in them. But there's a lot of them that are short-term rentals. And one of the biggest problems, second to the parties, with the biggest problems they have down there is the parking. Roads aren't real wide. You can't get cars through a dock, and then we got to get a fire truck through. Because you've got 15 people showing up and standing there for a weekend, enjoying themselves and not loving them for doing it, but they're putting their cars in the street all over the place, and we can't get around for security purposes. So they put requirements on them, their landlords, that they have to have signs in the house as to where you are and are not allowed to park. Very simple restriction to help protect the quality and character of that neighborhood that they have. You can take a look at noise regulations, you know, you can have, some places are requiring logs where you would, you know, the landlord would have to keep a log of everybody that rented in that particular property. You can define, you know, not just signs, but also parking, but you could put signs, you know, require certain noises. You know when you go to a hotel and you look at the back of the door? How many people sat there right in the back of the door? You know, the fine print? Yeah. I have. I love you, man. I hired a little offer. If you read the fine print, I want you. I'll give you my card later. But, you know, it's that, that sort of concept where what is it that you want the renter to know? The person that's there, what is it that you want, you can require that you put in another particular property? it in a particular property. Garbage. Where's the garbage going to go? What are we going to do with it? I mean, when it's a single-family home, we know, I mean, you, you put the garbage in a can or whatever, but when you have people in and out two, three, four times a week, whatever it may be, what's going to happen with the accumulation of garbage and where that's going to go? And then parties. I'm not quite sure how you regulate parties. People are trying to figure out how it is, how is it that you're going to do that? There's been a bunch of studies that have come out, um, highlighting some of the negative unintended consequences to short-term rentals. Discrimination, property value issues. There's also a lot of positives for short-term rentals. It's an opportunity to reuse properties that haven't otherwise been used. It brings people into a community that they may not have otherwise come into. It, in some places, uh, may increase property values if you have a real low amount of housing stock and a high demand. In other places where you have an adequate level of housing stock and not that, you know, extreme high of demand for properties, you can actually lower property values. Because courts have found, studies have found that rentals, short-term and long-term, aren't as stable as homeowners. And so the question is, do you want those in your high-density residential neighborhoods, your traditional R1 neighborhoods? Is that something that you want to do today? I'm just checking over some notes. I think that's the extent of what I wanted to tell you today and where things are. Purpose is only where we are today with our zoning ordinance. Some trends, the, the law as it exists today, recorded down from the Supreme Court or the Commonwealth Court. How it is that they interpret these ordinances when they're trying to determine whether they're any good or how to deal with them, they, they get into the definitions, the purposes, how we define our neighborhoods, what we do to try to attack them, whether that meets in, in the overall scheme of what we want to do with short-term rentals. To identify a few things within our definitions itself, that even if we don't change the placement or where we're going to allow the use or whatever maybe on the table today, but I still think there's some work to do. And some of the, um, and, and that's on the basis of the experience that we've had the last year of these same scenario and these things. And, and then some concepts as to what your regulations can be. Your regulations, we can't require, as, as a community, as a local municipality, we can't require all tenants of short-term rentals to wear pink pants. Because that's not reasonably related to use of property. That's not reasonably related to the police powers that we have for which gives us the purpose of zoning. Our regulations, if there are to be any, whether it be for short-term rental or commercial buildings or, um, you know, the, the, the big issue with zoning is, is essentially oriented businesses, the regulations have to be reasonably related to the harm that can be caused and in furtherance of the police powers that we have to protect this quality and character of the neighborhood. So, so long as we have a legitimate use, a legitimate purpose to those regulations, they should be okay. But there's no right or wrong answer. There's just policies. So I think that's what I've been asked to come and, and present to you today. So that you all can think about the concept of where you are and what you want to do. You can leave it as it is, it's perfectly fine. You can tighten that a little bit more, give a little more regulation, you can change the whole scheme. And I'd stand for some questions from the planning commission.
I do have a couple of questions for you. I guess this is, these are just some general questions. Why do you think cities and municipalities in Pennsylvania have delayed so long in addressing this? Because I guess Slice of Life is the decision. And in my research, I found like a handful of places that had ordinances. I mean, they're out there and they're in effect, but you'd think that it would be wide sweeping and I, and this goes back to the Pittsburgh incident that happened with the shooting and, and two fatalities. Pittsburgh woke up a day or two later and said, gee, we need licensing, we need controls and restrictions. I mean, Pittsburgh was caught flat-footed in this. So I mean, why do you think they have delayed so long?
Well, it's not a legal answer, but, um, I'll say COVID. I'll say that these, these short-term rentals have exploded, in my personal opinion, in the last three years. I've never taken one before. I've done three the last six months with my family. I mean, everybody's looking for an opportunity for a quick getaway, go see something different and I don't want to go stay at a hotel and seventy-five white people. So I think that what municipalities are seeing right now is that there's been an explosion of their use and proposed use. And, and, and when you run into those stories like Pittsburgh and the shooting up in the area and, and whatever it may be, people are starting to say, well, is this something that we want? Where are we? How are we regulating that? But I think the conversations are going to start picking up. Additionally, the bills of government are not designed to be efficient. We're not designed to make rash decisions because rash decisions come with long-term complications. And so nobody wants to be first. And I think that's the practical reality of local government. Let's see what somebody else does, how about our, our, and we can tweak it to our own particular situation.
I, I did have another question. And, uh, what is the effective date for conformance to an amended ordinance? Is it effective when it's finally voted in by the supervisors or is it effective when the process of amending the ordinance first starts?
So that's a very fact-intensive question that I can't give you an answer for sitting here today. But the process of identifying an issue and, and taking a look at regulations and, and getting into proposing changes does have the ability in certain circumstances to apply before full adoption. But that was not on my research list. Thank you for stopping. I answered that already. There's something there.
I'll get back to you.
Anybody else? No? I stopped you all, huh?
Well, I guess one other one, so.
Oh, here we go.
Here's the obvious.
This is an easy one?
Yeah, well, it's almost like a half-statement, so you might even pass on it if you want.
I'd be happy to.
Yeah, but, so going back to this definition business of hotel. So hotel, I mean, the obvious is clearly a business, right? And we restrict businesses in residential areas. So I, I'm thinking that that's another, that's another thing that's, that's stuck in my mind about this. What is and is not a business as well?
That is important, I mean, the answer to that by saying that this is cutting-edge, everyone just calm down, it's very exciting, cutting-edge, so many long discussions, that's there. Is right, is that question? What are these? Because for the last five, six years, it's been the residential home that Graham died and it's in a pretty cool place and there's really attraction over there on the corner and it went into failing and they turned it into a pair of BB or, or VRBO or whatever my kids keep telling me to call Reverb O. And I wasn't doing that right. But whatever, you're laughing because your kids are telling me the same thing. But, you know, but now you get into these situations like Slice of Life where people are saying, this is very great returns, I rent this thing's out on a, like, basis versus, you know. So let's go build something and have a corporation own it and that's it. But, but we haven't historically, and I say historically, our history on this is what, four years old, so we haven't historically regulated it that way because that hasn't been the experience. That's the next thing. And, and part of the problem with zoning, part of the problem is with, with local governments, we're not really good at predicting where the market's going to go. All we can do is respond as best as we possibly can. So that's the question.
I have a question.
I'm going to defer to the gentleman up there, Phil, permit.
Just a comment before we get started. We have to be out of here by six o'clock or there's a supervisor's meeting that starts at six o'clock, just to preface our discussion here. And, and it's not going to get into an argument of, uh, situation. We'd like a two-minute con, uh, uh, time to come to the microphone, state your name and address and we would appreciate, um, it, keep, keep, uh, keep it civil. We're trying to discuss both sides of this issue because I know there's pros and cons on both sides.
And if I may say, this is an ongoing discussion for the planning commission. There's some decisions that are going to be made tonight and there'll be other opportunities where the planning commission is in the information of receiving a public hearing. This was more of an education opportunity, pray everyone involved, so if you have something to say and you don't have a chance to say it, that opportunity will be made in the future.
See, this isn't officially a hearing. This is just a comment time. We would ask you to come to the microphone and, and state your name and, and address, please. And I guess be as civil as we can. Can you come to the microphone and, and state your name and address, please?
I'd like the precedence that we take the people that live next door to the Airbnb.
We need your name and address, please.
My name is.
We're taking minutes for this and so we'd like to have those added to the minutes as part of the discussion.
Go for it, P.I.R., P.I.E.R., one zero, two zero zero, Tanger, Lilly Lane, Waterford, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
I live in Shumpike Estates. There is an Airbnb next door to my home, residential neighborhood, R, uh, used to be R1, must be RD1 now. Everything the solicitor mentioned that are nightmares, living next to a hotel are very trash. Numerous occasions we've had to put the trash out because the owner of the property isn't the person that leases the property out. So that goes to a comment the solicitor made about making sure that the person that owns the, the Airbnb controls the cars. Uh, we've had occasions, the hotel is supposed to hold ten people. We've seen as many as twenty cars parked at the house, uh, which is not typical for residential neighborhood, more like a hotel. It's not pleasant experience for a person that's bought a home in a residential area to have a home that is being used as a hotel. Very disappointing, very disappointing. There's lots more people. I'll probably get the other person, I didn't say enough, but I'll let more people talk.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, Billy, y'all have been saying too much.
I'm the eleven, eighty-seven hundred Carson Road. I have a short-term rental within the township that we started last fall. It's a seasonal rental because of our winters here and it's out of family property that we've owned for over a hundred years and it's very private and secluded. We use the Airbnb platform. We limit our guests to two guests, no children, and they have to be verified through Airbnb where some people don't want to, but that's where they put in their driver's licenses and such to verify that. We take care of the trash, we have the cleaning, there's actually no problems, it's very positive. It's, uh, we encourage use of restaurants and facilities within the township and we are a regional asset too because many people come here for presque ale. We've had guests, a, a thirty-day guest from Oregon, uh, we've had guests from South Carolina, North Carolina, uh, up above Lake George, um, Grove City, but we don't, it, it's a two-night minimum. It's not like it's in and out and it's usually a weekend, but most of our rentals go three to seven days. And it's, we pay a hotel occupancy tax that's taken out of our funds and comes back into this region. It's automatically taken out. It's been a very positive experience because I'm very protective of my property because I've put a lot of money into it and my grandfather built the original structure over a hundred years ago. And I would just like to say that, uh, areas such as, I've talked to planning commission, Harbor Creek Township, the, the supervisors over there have decided not to make a stance on it and that it's a civil matter. And I know because I've been in real estate as a broker and a real estate appraiser for over thirty years, that the homeowners associations in these areas need to go back and address their homeowners association and put these in that short-term rentals are not allowed in these residential districts where we have a good homogeneous, uh, neighborhood. So really that's a good thing to have the HOA get involved. Like in Harbor Ridge where I have some lots for sale right now, they do not allow short-term rentals. So I just wanted to put a positive twist on it. I have great comments from people, they love Summit and I don't think Summit is a place that they're coming in as corporate people and I don't think we have that many STRs here and they're run mom and pop style.
May I ask a question? Thank you, that's, that's a very good statement. I just have a question about, uh, your location, your setting. Is it semi-rural or rural then or is it?
Uh, my location is on Route ninety-seven. It's kind of kitty quarter to the French Quarter's and sits back from the road. There's seven acres, it's surrounded by woods, it has a little creek by it and it's set up with one bedroom and.
Okay, so it's not residential?
It, it's actually zoned, the commercial in the front and agricultural in the rear, but that wasn't the issue. But it is used by family too and it shuts down when the snow comes.
Thank you. Have somebody else?
Rockin' Yable, one five seven one Potterosa Drive. And I have multiple Airbnbs and the, I guess some of them, any question, are the ones that I've just purchased, which are right in my own neighborhood. I particularly bought one very, very lighted property and have put over two hundred and forty thousand dollars into rehabbing the property. Uh, it's going to be much better than, you know, what it was before with the people that are living there. I have multiple, um, very high-dollar properties. I cater to high-end clients. My husband and I meticulously maintain everything. We, uh, check all the references before anybody stays. We allow no parties. We have outside video cameras, um, at every single property so we know if there's going to be, you know, any issues at all. I put so much money into these properties and so much time into them that I would never want a party coming in and destroying the enormous investment that we've made. And I wouldn't bring trashy people into the neighborhood where I live, including right on my own property, which I have a small Airbnb there as well. I've made very good friends through the years and I've done this for years and years, very good friends. People come back over and over and over again. They go from one property, they stay at another one of my properties, they refer their friends, they refer their family and in the years I've been doing this, I have never had an issue. You're going to have issues with shootings, whether it's, um, short-term, long-term, if it's in a bad part of the area and you're renting to bad people. I rented long-term for many, many years and I had tons more problems than what I have now. Short-term rental, you're renting to a higher-class person that can pay two hundred to four hundred dollars a night versus a long-term rental where they can't afford to pay their rent. And, you know, they come in, they, they trash your house, they don't take care of the property. This way I'm paying somebody and we're doing it ourselves. We maintain our lawns, we maintain the house, um, everything is, is very meticulous. You're going to get slum lords, you know, we're not one of them. I, I believe there should be regulation, there should be inspections, a fee would be very permissible and I'm welcome, you know, to any of the neighbors if there's ever a problem, you know, to call me. You know, all that I would ask though, one of the others, please don't stop my mother on the road again and give her shit. the road again and give her shit, because she's the only one with my dying hat right now, okay?
Wait, you say about it, that is.
Yeah. Thank you.
My name is Ed Tropur, I live at 1235 Ponderosa Drive. And we had been notified that there's going to be Airbnbs on the road. It's a very quiet road, not a through street, there's a lot of walkers, a lot of young children, and we don't need the additional traffic. Now, Ron brought up about being a business. There's been a few people on the road that have had a, wanted to be a bakery, another woman had wanted to make baked cakes, and she wasn't allowed to do that. And there's another person that had daycare, and they had to discontinue doing that. That was just for a couple of kids. So I don't know why, an Airbnb, which has not been called a business until Ron mentioned it, would be allowed on a completely quiet residential street with a lot of walkers and children, where you get additional traffic. Additionally, I have some ordinances from a city in South Carolina. I'd like to just present them for some consideration when we're discussing.
This isn't really a hearing, this is just a speech, and we'd really like to have somebody else.
Okay.
Have a chance. You can have that turned into a.
Yeah, I gave you her lobby already.
That's good.
Anybody else want some?
Thank you.
You can have a couple.
Thanks, Eddie. Thanks, Ed.
Hello. Steven Manes House, 8125 Ponderosa Drive. My family was the very first ones in that subdivision in 1963. It wasn't even called Ponderosa then, it was called Leonard Drive, after the developer. Most of the properties were cow pastures, cornfields. I've seen my neighborhood grow, I've seen people move in. Not all the names are the same, the faces change, but it's always been single-family housing. I know my neighbors, they know me, okay? We are a little community, a little fabric together. For every gooey choo-choo's Airbnb story that they come up with, I can give you dozens of horror stories. It only takes one. We care about our neighborhood because we own it. It is of best interest to take care of it, to take care of each other. You start bringing people a couple of weeks at a time, they don't know us, we don't know them. We know someday you might get drug dealers in there, get kids who drive 50 miles an hour down a nice little street. We have families that walk their children, we have dog walkers. It's nice and quiet. We know each other, we care about each other. We don't need strangers moving in every couple of weeks. This must not be allowed to happen. Okay? That's all I can tell you. No.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other comments?
Brian Kowalski, 381 Robinson Road. And I purchased some property on Robinson Road, I actually live right next door to that, so I have a property that's connected. And in January, I came in and was fortunate enough to meet with Ms. Tamara Cass and Mr. Matt Jonas. We then purchased the property after looking at the lack of the regulations that might hinder me from purchasing that. So purchased the property at 28 acres, and that is near, it's actually bordering, part of that property is bordering one of the subdivisions, which would be Dundee Lane. And so anyhow, I had come here for a meeting with you guys, we met, that would have been March 14th, which I did get approved, pre-approved for those lots. One of the things, two of you had asked me is, you were concerned about the people that were around in their backyards and those that were connecting. So I went to six individual families that their backyard hits my woods, this is a wooded lot. So I did go to six people, I looked at all of them, went and specifically went to their house, knocked on the door, explained what I was going to do, and I'll tell you that their response was very thankful that I wasn't going to put a big subdivision in there because they've got a beautiful set of woods out their backyard, and my goal is not to clear out the property, but actually keep it as close to what it is. So I did do what you guys had requested, and actually, at least one of those individuals is in the room tonight, that I believe would like to take a moment if we have any more time. But I just want to say one more thing. You know, this is my neighborhood as well, so I can, I can understand, you know, some of the comments of concerns of people who don't care about their property, but in this case, I care very much about my neighborhood. Thank you.
Jamie Tress, 866 Dundy Road. As Mr. Kowalski just said, he did in fact speak with each of us, shared his proposals, and many of us were pleased with the fact that he is trying to keep our woods a focal point of his project. I feel, many of us feel fine about it in that it's a complete separate chunk of property. I understand some of these situations may be more intermeagled with the houses, ours is separate. And not only is it a separate trunk, but as Mr. Kowalski said, he is also a member of our community, he's off Robinson Road, and I feel strongly that he is going to micromanage that property and keep it something of class and do what's good for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. We have about two or three minutes left. Anybody else have anything else to say? Name, rank, answer, remember.
What's up? I'll be here for 10 minutes. Gary Ford, I live at 100 Galeaway in Chumpike Estates. And I guess, I mean, I respect everyone's opinion here, like that are for it and against it, but I guess the big thing that I think is, again, like you talked about residential, I mean, we're a subdivision, we're 12 houses in that subdivision. No one there ever expected to have like that kind of rental there. So I guess my big question, I know this isn't a hearing, but like you're saying, that's another time. How long are we going to wait to try to figure out how to handle this? Because the longer we wait, the more that can happen, and more that people, you know, can be stressed out and not. Do we have an idea on that?
The wheels of time, as he said, take.
Do we have to wait for like other precedents, though? He was talking about definitions changing.
We're moving at the speed of. We'll have a hearing, and I'm not sure when the hearing will be. And then after that, it goes, so it'll go in front of the planning commission at that point, and then it goes, from there, it goes to the supervisors for the, so we're just an advising body. And so it will go to the supervisors after it comes to the planning commission at that hearing.
Okay.
And we won't vote on it, I mean, we'll vote on it positively, or tentatively, after that meeting.
Our next planning commission is on the night, I mean, it can be an agenda item to discuss.
Yeah, let me just, there's no proposal intended, this is starting a conversation in the process.
And I totally respect that, I'm just saying that I think there's a difference between having seven acres or 20 acres and doing something versus 12, you know, 12 houses in a subdivision or any subdivision.
Thank you. Thanks, Gary. Right now, it's six o'clock, I guess I have to close. We have a meeting.
Yeah, I just need to say this quickly, thank you.
We have a meeting.
My name is Lori Polianski, I live at 6891 Ponderosa Drive. I think that was a very fair question on the timeframe. As you stated, sir, you said that most likely any homes that are already an Airbnb would be grandfathered. Therefore, before more purchase, we need to know that timing, this is pretty critical for our neighborhoods, that's one. Two, I don't, I don't have the facts, so I'll need to defer to the owner of the property, but hearing that potentially two cabins may be built in our neighborhood, did my research, I will bring it to the hearing, will greatly depreciate the value. A $450,000 home next to a cabin is unacceptable. So timing is critical, like to learn more about that in the next hearing, or next session. Thank you.
Thank you. This time.
One more thing.
We're done, it's after.
I want requests, just a request. My name's Eric Askin, 6851 Ponderosa Drive, I live right next to order. I would like all the minutes sent, everybody on the name list, so that we can read the facts and the information that you would present, it would be good for the rest of the body to have physical and on their hand.
The minutes will be presented to the planning commission for review and approval at their next meeting, at which point they'll be.
Well, the people would like to know the information we do have, so we can study it, so we can bring an approach to the next meeting.
And in addition, this meeting has been recorded, it'll be posted to YouTube within the next day or so. The next meeting is.
May 9.
May 9 was the next planning meeting.